Mayor John Eric Hoover.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chris Mayer. Let the record show that Vice Mayor Mayer is absent from tonight's meeting. Councilman Robert Hubbard.
Here.
Councilwoman Lisa Burke. Let the record show that Councilwoman Lisa Burke is absent from today's meeting. Councilwoman Christine Sullivan.
Here.
City Manager Andrew Butterfield. Let the record show that our city manager is also absent from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Okay, first up, we normally, it's total open agenda on town hall stuff, but we do have a guest speaker tonight, just for a short period of time, ten fifteen minutes, he had a presentation to get some information out to community, so we thought we'd invite him here to do that. So I would like to invite Chuck Lane, he's the Director of the Office of Disaster Recovery Resources with Pasco County. He's got a short presentation to give. Welcome Chuck, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. Thank you. So earlier this year, Pasco County received five hundred and eighty-five million dollars from the federal government in response to the hurricanes, Hurricanes Adalia in two thousand and twenty-three and Leland and Milton last year. So we're putting together a program to spend those funds. Now, earlier this year, we did a round of public meetings where we got input from the public on how we should spend those funds. The public overwhelmingly told us that we should spend those funds on housing and infrastructure. So that's really what we've done, that's the plan we've put together. We put together a plan, HUD has approved that plan, and now it's time to execute that plan. So we want to make people aware of the opportunities that are coming. This is a lot of money, and this is enough money to really move the needle in Pasco County and make a difference. So, spread the word on this program, I'm going to briefly present it, and there's a lot of good information in here.
Is it, mic on, Ashley?
It is.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the left-hand side there, you can see, those are the different programs that we'll be running. Tonight, I want to talk mostly about the individual housing program. That's the program that we've launched this week, we launched it yesterday. And these other programs will launch later. So the housing program, and the individual housing program, we're putting two hundred and five million dollars into that program. I'll talk a little bit about that later. And then we have infrastructure, further down the list, you see mitigation. Mitigation is largely infrastructure as well. As HUD defines it, the difference is infrastructure is repairing infrastructure that was damaged by the storm. Mitigation is creating resiliency with infrastructure improvements to protect against future storms. Economic recovery is probably the next program we'll launch in January or February, as to help small businesses and nonprofits recover from the storms. Public services, we allocated ten million dollars towards public services to really get much-needed public services to people in our community. We have a good nonprofit network that can help deliver those public services. And there's also a planning piece that we'll put together. Some of the planning stuff will inform some of the other projects and programs like infrastructure. Planning, for example, could be the planning for a stormwater improvement project. So this is one of the restrictive aspects of the grant. Seventy percent of the funds have to be spent on households that earn eighty percent of the area's median income or less. And you can see those limits on the slide, they vary by household size. For example, a family of four, if you earn more than eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, you make more money than eighty percent of area median income. So seventy percent has to be spent in this income category. And we had six public meetings over the last, over the last week or so, before the holidays. We had six public meetings in eight days. And we heard overwhelmingly from the public that this is very restrictive, and they want us to spend some funds on a higher income bracket. We do have the ability to spend funds on a hundred and twenty percent of area median income, up to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. But we have to be careful of doing it because if we miss that seventy percent rule, we could have the funds clawed back from the federal government, then we can't help anybody, right? So these are the one-twenty percent AMI limits. So this is what, in a limited way, we can go up to this amount as well, okay?
So Mike had mentioned today, when I talked to him, that you may be tweaking these.
This is the major tweak that we've made.
Hundred and twenty?
Yeah, in response to the public meetings. We heard from a lot of people, hey, this is a great program, it can help a lot of people, but it can't help me. So, we were, you know, we got some, I wouldn't say pressured, but we got some feedback that this is something that we needed to do. So, we're going to be quite limited on the higher income level, I'll explain it in a moment.
Okay.
So, of the eighty percent and below, okay, so that's what we're talking about now, we're going to focus, we're going to have a priority level to try to help the most vulnerable citizens first, in a phase one, if you will. So, to meet that criteria, you have to be one of five criteria. One, if you're below fifty percent of area median income, you're a very low-income household, you would qualify as a priority client, as a priority household. The other four are if you have a child in your home ages five and under, a senior age sixty-two and older, if you have a disabled person, or if you are still displaced from the storms. Those are all criteria that will prioritize you. It doesn't matter if you have one or three. If you have one of these criteria, you will go to phase one, okay? And phase two will be the eighty percent of area median income that is not prioritized. Now, along with phase one, what we're going to do is we're opening it up, as I mentioned, to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income. But what we're doing for the eighty percent AMI to one-twenty percent AMI is we're limiting it to those who were displaced or still displaced from the storm. So we're trying to get to the folks that are hardest hit, okay? Now, this includes manufactured housing. Manufactured housing is particularly limited, it's because of the way our action plan was written. So for the time being, it's limited to those still displaced from the storm, but also, you have to have a senior in your home or a child in your home. We're considering changing that, but it'll take some time to do that, okay? All right, so this is the fifty percent of area median income limits, which prioritizes a household, so. All right, so the individual housing program, we launched it yesterday, we've gotten a lot of attention on it, we had a huge media push going up to it, we think the launch went very well. So what can we do? We can reimburse you for expenses you've paid to fix your home. Home Depot expenses, you had to pay somebody to move debris from your yard, you had to stay in a hotel for two weeks because your house wasn't livable. All those types of things that came out of your pocket, those are all eligible for expenses. Repair, rebuild, or elevate your home, that's probably going to be the most active program. We can fund repairs to homes, we can, if a home's too far gone to be repaired, we can demolish it and build a new home. We can, if code requires it, we can elevate your home to the proper level. We can remove unsightly buildings, like a detached garage or a shed, fix those up with this money because it's not residential. If they're a hazard, we can tear them down. We're working on a buyout program where people can voluntarily just cut bait, and they want to sell us the property, we can buy the property, and they can take the funding and they can go elsewhere, and go on with their lives. And then relocation is, temporary relocation is a big component because most of these projects that we're doing repairs, all of the projects where we're doing a rebuild, people need a temporary place to live, and we'll pay that cost. So, real quickly, the caps, the award caps on these things. For a traditionally constructed home, stick-built, concrete block, the maximum reimbursement is seventy-five thousand dollars. For a repair, the maximum repair is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And if we have to rebuild your home, it's a maximum of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If we have to elevate it, we can add an additional hundred thousand dollars to it. These are not small amounts of money, these are amounts of money that will change people's lives.
Can you say, this number, I'm sorry?
Okay, so.
Seventy-five to reimburse.
To reimburse for a traditionally built home, to reimburse a maximum of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Now, this for expenses that they would have done to fix it, right?
Yes. To repair, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And to rebuild, three hundred and thirty thousand, and if has to elevate, it's an additional hundred thousand dollars. Now, for manufactured homes, now, we use the term manufactured home and mobile home interchangeably, right? The older homes got a real bad rap, older mobile homes, really bad structures, vulnerable structures. The newer mobile homes that are made today are hardened structures. So we have a manufactured housing replacement program. Those have different caps. So the maximum repair on that will be thirty thousand dollars. The maximum for a replacement, I believe it's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for single wide and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a double wide or a triple wide. I got it right, all right? And the maximum reimbursement for manufactured home program is twenty-five thousand dollars.
What's the maximum on the buyout, did you say?
We're still building that guideline, so we don't, we don't.
So on the, you said to rebuild it was three-thirty, right? And if you have to rebuild it in the air, you go up to four-thirty because another hundred thousand for those.
Those are the maxes, yeah.
What's your cap if it's just an elevation, if you just need to elevate it? Is it the same plan as the seventy-five percent, or is it?
The thing is, to elevate, we're only going to elevate if code requires it, right? So if code's going to require it, it's because it's substantially.
Substantially damaged, correct.
Yeah, so it'll take more than just a single elevation. So we really won't have just an elevation, because if the home isn't substantially damaged, we can repair it as-is, rather than go in that, and that's just going to make the money go further, and help more people.
It's an important point to know, because obviously you've got Elevate Florida, which is done with its funding, you have the other programs, HMGP or whatever, that's still, I think, various phases of funding. But this particular one, you have to be in a substantially damaged category to access this, from an elevation standpoint.
Well, from a rebuild and an elevation standpoint, yes, I think that's an accurate statement, yeah. So this is just a guess as to what we think we're going to encounter in this program. Repair, rebuild, eight hundred homes, that would be the repair of manufactured homes as well. Replacement of two hundred and fifty manufactured homes, reimbursement of about five hundred homeowners. It's an educated guess, you know, we'll keep updating these as we go along. So how does a person qualify? They owned a home during the disaster that affected them, and they still own the property. They lived there during that disaster, when that happened, of course, and used that home as their primary home at that time. And I'm eligible. You know, if you can answer yes to all of these five questions, that's really basically the eligibility criteria.
What is the timeline, the reason, I tell you why I'm asking, what's the timeline on them submitting their application and getting a response if they're eligible to move forward?
I got a timeline set up here in a bit, in a minute.
The reason I ask that, staff, if you could make, no, obviously, our billing department has folks that are in substantially damaged situations where they don't have the money, they didn't qualify for Elevate Florida and all that. And so I want to make sure that with this new opportunity opening up, that there's a way to, obviously, put them on hold before, move forward in a process, whether it be a demolition or whatever, that they can apply for this, and we get feedback before we move on that property, if that makes sense? Because this is, obviously, this is new, and this is another avenue to get that home fixed up.
Eligible home types, as I mentioned, you got your traditionally-built homes in that first bullet, manufactured homes, as I said. Townhomes, attached dwellings, I guess we call them in our world, they have to be less than five units. Anything more than five units, we can help in a later phase. But for this program that we're launching now, four units or less, if they're attached, we can offer some assistance. So we have to require a lot of documentation. We have to verify with HUD that all this stuff is on the level, and, you know, people are in fact eligible. So there's a lot of stuff we need to collect, these are the things we need to verify, there's a number of documents that we will collect in order to do that. This is a really important slide, you know, this is a block grant, and for what you know about block grants, there's a lot of flexibility with them, they give the money to the local government, and they give them a lot of latitude in how they set up the programs. This is something that is absolutely not flexible. This is duplication of benefits, we cannot use our funds to pay for something that was already funded with FEMA or other funds, insurance, that kind of stuff. So, we're going to do an exhaustive search and research, we have resources to find out, you know, where that money's gone, and what money these folks have already gotten. So, what happens, and this slide, I think, illustrates it pretty well. If a project has an eligible repair cost of a hundred thousand dollars, and they were, for example, given forty thousand dollars from FEMA, we can only come with sixty thousand dollars to the table, okay? Now, what happens if that person comes to us and says, well, I spent that money? You know, what am I going to do? Well, what'd you spend it on? Did you spend it on, you know, fixing your home, paying a contractor, did you get a loan to fix your home? Did you have to stay in a hotel for two months? These types of expenses, we can apply to this, and we can make that forty thousand dollar number shrink, and that sixty thousand dollar number increase. So that's all through collaboration with the homeowner, through the application process. Each homeowner will have a case manager, each applicant will have a case manager. So this stuff will be really easy, the communication flow will be really easy for the applicant.
What about insurance claims and deductibles? You said they talked about federal assistance, so if you had, say, your insurance carrier had a hundred thousand dollars worth of federal repair cost, you had a twenty thousand dollar deductible, so you had basically eighty thousand dollar claim, out of pocket, they're twenty thousand, are they able to apply for that twenty thousand assistance?
Not for their deductible.
Okay.
That's unfortunate, and we've had that question asked a few times, and that's a tough one to swallow.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's nothing we can do about that, that's a federal rule. So the reimbursement program, I already talked about it, pretty simple, stuff you paid for out of your personal funds that, you know, applies to the storm, going to be eligible. Very important, if you apply to this program and you hit that submit button at the end of the program, at the end of the application, that's, you are no longer, at that point, allowed, eligible for any reimbursements after that point. So it's very important that people know that, that if they're, because we saw a lot of people that are fixing their homes right now. If they continue to do that, we can't reimburse them, so they need to know that. And we'll go as quickly as we can to get them eligible and ready to go. So really, you know, with the homeowners that we're dealing with, we need open communication, we need these folks to respond to us. I can tell you, being in this line of work for about a dozen years, one of the biggest, I would say, the biggest barrier to a program like this is people don't finish their applications. They get into an application, and it's, our application has seventeen steps. It's not, you're not going to do it in five minutes. People get through it, they don't like technology, they throw their hands up, they can't find documentation that they need, and they say, I'm done, I'm not doing this, and they walk away. And I just, I want to encourage people to stay the course, finish the application, we have resources that will help you. If you can't, if you don't, if you're not good with technology, we're, you know, I'll talk about it later in a minute, we're going to have meetings set up where people can come throughout the county, all throughout the county, and we can assist them with an application. If somebody has mobility issues, we will come to their home. So there's really nothing that should prevent someone from filling out an application, because we will provide the technical assistance to do so.
I'm assuming you can save it along the way, so you don't have to finish.
Yes. So the obligations, you know, a lot of these programs require homeowners' insurance to protect our investment. We've decided not to do that, that is a pretty high burden with some of these low-income homeowners. But one thing we cannot waive is a requirement for flood insurance. If a home is in a flood plain, and we assist with this money, they have to carry flood insurance for as long as they live with that home, and they have to inform the next person who buys that home that they have to carry flood insurance. Because this requirement will run with the land in perpetuity. If the flood insurance has dropped and we get hit by another storm, that property will not be eligible for these funds, or FEMA funds, or other funds, other federal funds as well. So it's very important that people understand, if they're in a flood plain, they're going to have to carry insurance. So this is a timeline, I don't know if this answers your question, Mayor? This is the pre-construction timeline. I think these timelines are a little bit conservatively long, some of them can be done concurrently to some degree. It just gives the folks an idea of what we're looking at in terms of timing. Did that answer, does this answer the question you had earlier?
I guess, what I want to know is, is from the time that the application gets submitted, how long it takes to get it approved or denied? I guess I'm going to answer by, hey, I'm approved for this.
Yeah. I'm thinking, you know, within a week to two weeks, I'm sorry, Tim, approval of an application, timing?
Within thirty days.
Thirty days?
And I will say that's on both two of them, yesterday and for.
Yeah. And there's some things that require an environmental review, and that requires a bit of a lengthier process.
Yeah, so I think, I think from a city perspective, given this availability, if we have somebody in a situation, we reach out to them, let them know that, hey, this opportunity is available, we're going to give you, say, two weeks to apply for it, and then we can, once that application goes in, we can grant to them maybe another thirty days to see what the result of that is, just to give them a little time to kind of stall that process, to give them an opportunity to apply for this, if it works out.
Yeah, we could talk about this at a later time, but the thing is, is that, you know, we can present this as an option, but they have to, they have to take that initiative.
Yes, they have to do it.
If a home is in that, you know, demolition process or something like that, and the city grants this option, they have to take advantage of it, you know, and do the application, and apply for the application. We can at least, in case we're getting calls from council, or the, you know, residents wondering why we're moving forward, we can at least say, this resident is in the process of doing that, so, you know, but they have to take that initiative.
Yeah, I don't want to see somebody get in a situation where they've been substantially damaged, obviously, the timeframe has been ticking for a long time now, that they're up against a wall where it's, you're going to have to demo it or whatever, and now this is available, we'll make sure there's a timeframe in there where they can say, okay, if you want, you can apply for this, we'll stay that for a certain period of time. So if you get approval, then you can basically work yourself out of that situation, so.
And as long as they send, you know, and like I said, as long as they send proof to Development Services that, you know, look, here's a copy of the email that I applied for it, and now, okay, now we can wait for that thirty-day timeline to start. And in that way, if anyone else calls and says, well, why isn't the city moving forward on this project? Well, we are, but we're trying to help them out with county assistance.
The handsome guy in the back of the room that I'm throwing questions at is Tim Lagootie, he's our project manager on the consultant side, subject matter expert. You know, with this kind of money, we had a choice to either create a department, which we would have had to hire eighty, ninety people, or we could go with a slim staff and go large in the consultant side, and that's what we've done. And IEM International, who Tim is with, has been outstanding through this process, so just wanted to introduce him. So here's the construction timeline. I think those are pretty good numbers, the rehabilitation projects obviously were varied by scope, but reconstruction and replacement, those are good targets. So we had, as I mentioned, we had six public meetings in eight days prior to Thanksgiving, and we had them at all of these venues. So what we did after that is we scheduled at these same venues to try to provide some consistency to our residents, the intake events. So these intake events will go from eight AM to eight PM, and they were two-hour appointments, most of them won't last that long, which will give us the opportunity to entertain walk-ins. And that way, people can come in and they can sit down with the case manager, and really work through that application and get that application submitted. Some more information, our website, we're required to keep our website up to date, that is a HUD requirement. That is actually the source of most findings in a program like this. So we will be sure to keep our website updated, you can go to mypasco.net, at the top of the page, you can tap on the Better Future Program button, and that will take you right to our webpage, and that's where all of the information is. There is a link on that page now to apply, they can tap the link and they can begin their application. They can email us at thatbetterfuture@mypasco.net, my team is monitoring that daily, multiple times daily. And that phone number right there is now active since we've launched. Any questions about an application, they can call that number on the screen, and they will talk to a real person, nothing automated. So that's all I have for you, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know at the public meetings, the Q and A was helping people understand stuff.
Yeah, so obviously, appreciate you coming out and sharing that. Get a copy of that presentation, maybe put that on the website so people can review it. Where our town halls normally work, when somebody starts a topic, then we kind of stay on the topic. So, in light of that, since you've kind of started this topic, I'm going to open it up to anybody who has any questions in the audience regarding hazard mitigation, hurricane repair. Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, yeah, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm James Stahl, I'm the founder of Ritchie FM, one oh seven point nine FM. We've been working at this, we're finally approved, as of today, we can start to broadcast. We've got everything set up to do that, just a couple more technical things. But I wanted to talk about that because as we enter this stage, I want to explain why this matters to Port Ritchie and Newport Ritchie too. First of all, life safety, during recent storms, part of the community without power persistently for several days. My intention is to make the station functional during an extended power outage, if we have that kind of event ever happen again. I've got a combination of solar and battery and things, that we can actually make a twenty-four-hour station operational. It will actually, I gave a pass out to you guys, I'm just sort of paraphrasing here, but Ritchie FM is built specifically to withstand extended power outages. It's designed to stay operational when other systems fail, makes the station a resilient public safety communication asset for hurricanes, emergencies, and recovery operations. Second, we're a hyper-local broadcaster, Port Ritchie sits on the fringe of the Tampa market, so major stations do not provide detailed neighborhood-level coverage here. Ritchie FM fills the gap with hyper-local emergency updates, neighborhood impact information, and direct communication pathways between city hall, public safety, and residents. That includes real-time messaging for food distribution, shelters, evacuation guidance, and community recovery, things no regional station can do. Third, economic benefit. Ritchie FM will support Ritchie's small business through affordable micro-sponsorships and through digital business directory and QR-based engagement platforms. This keeps local commerce inside the community. You wouldn't think I'm in radio, would you, I'm stumbling through this, sorry, it's been a long day. I'm not asking for a decision tonight, I just want to open a dialogue with the city. I think that it's a great asset. We're going to be located on a tower, it's in Port Ritchie, I'm going to take, I'm going to change the city of this to Port Ritchie, it's actually set up in Newport Ritchie, the license. But, you know, if you guys can work with me, I'd like to set you guys up with an emergency broadcast capability from here, and a mobile operations center, and build some resiliency into that, and then we can actually help the community do a lot of different things, and help the economic portion of this, which has greatly impacted everyone. But, that's where we're at, it's ready, it's complete. I've worked on this since late twenty twenty-three, out of my own funds, and I got wiped out in the hurricane, so. I brought it all back, but I do need some engagement from you guys, what you guys want to do with it.
Yeah, so I would suggest, I think you've been. Okay, yeah, so start there, and he'll work with you, and then obviously bring things back to council if we need it.
Eric, I worked with too, because he's resiliency, I think, yeah, that would be good, okay, all right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chuck on his topic?
I don't have necessarily a question for him, but how, Linda Rubrique, five, five, one, seven, let's talk. I'm sure you've been aware of this, how are we going to get this information out to the residents who were substantially damaged? Do you have a clue?
Yeah, so.
I'm sure you have a plan, that's why I wanted to come up.
So, the plan, as I was saying, Veronica needs to be aware, or somebody in the billing department that would do this, about this information, that they can get out, that's really have a list of people that are in the situation. We can push it out to them, whether it be a letter or whatever.
Yeah, we just received a notice from Pasco County, a news feed from them, which we've already forwarded through our website and Facebook. And I'm actually in an email string with the city manager and Veronica on this specific topic. We've also done a quick link on our website to go straight to the Better Homes portal for Pasco County. So, we're already moving forward with that, but what I'll do is that I'll relate to the city manager and Veronica tomorrow about pulling up everyone that's on that substantial list, and seeing if we can just get this information to them, either by hand or, how we can get this out to them, and then they can start.
And so what I would suggest is, instead of just pushing it out there and hoping it's received, is actually make a contact, so you go down and check, hey, I talked to Eric Hoover, and made him aware, I talked to this person. So we actually have. I will make sure nobody gets left out, so.
It wasn't just substantially damaged homes that could qualify for this, though, that was only for the elevation part.
That's a good question, is it, do you have to be, for the other stuff, substantially damaged?
You don't have to be substantially damaged to get a benefit here.
You've got to meet the income, it gets taxed.
Some qualify.
Non-substantially damaged people, can we get the message out to them as well? And what about our demo from last week, can we get the message out to them?
Yeah, well.
So we've done a really strong media push prior to Thanksgiving and continuing since then. We get a lot more than I care to be on TV with newscasts, we've got billboards, we've had radio messages. We've done a lot with our media communications, so that a lot of the folks may be aware, but this is the continued push, I mean, I want to have as many opportunities as I can to present this. So, any way you can get the word out.
Yeah, and so, obviously, we push information out of the town hall, this website, and all these places, whatever. Again, unless you're consuming it from there, they're not going to get that. My biggest concern is the people that are at a point where they're going to lose their home. I think we need to make some phone calls, I mean, it's a handful of people. As far as the people that aren't in that situation, obviously, they're not up against a wall from a timeframe perspective. I guess that's up for debate, do we send out individual letters to all the people that were in the city?
Only so many people are going to go through the process, so I think it should be sent out to everybody and let Pasco determine, based on their qualification system, who gets the money. So, a lot of people won't qualify.
Yeah, we do have the ability to put a little bit into the water bill, right? As far as, I mean, that's not something separate, but something on the water bill, say, hey, do money's bail for Pasco, go to this website, see if you qualify. So we can get everybody's, and that even goes outside the city, anybody's water service, that would get at least a mailing to them.
We send out texts to people all the time.
If they're signed up to the, on the website, it's a problem if you have people that hadn't engaged.
Our new newsletter?
That would be a good thing for the newsletter.
Veronica would probably find in a couple days.
I don't think. The newsletter?
It's been finalized, it's been posted on the website, and I was going to send it out, mass email the next day, probably tomorrow.
Could we maybe hold it off for a couple days and get that in it, and add that?
Like bold letters, right on the front page would be.
Like bold letters, that on the front page would be.
Yeah. Newsflash, yeah.
I had a question about the Florida, Elevate Florida program. Are you, there's some, some people that run that program, and then the funds ran out and they got kicked off.
Yes.
Are you guys going to pick that back up? Are you going to work with them, reapply, start over?
We have a list of all the folks that went through that program, and the folks that, that didn't qualify, we, we've reached out to them. A lot of them won't qualify, that wasn't an income qualifying program. One of the things about Elevate Florida that's important, people that did qualify and are getting benefits, this funding, this funding can actually pay their match. I think it's 25%.
25%? But again, they have to be substantially damaged in order, in elevation or nothing.
I don't know if, if the elevation Florida, if Elevate Florida program requires a substantially damaged home or not. Okay.
But your Elevate does, so you're saying, outside of that, if you have Elevate Florida, or you're in some other program, and you have that 25% match, that 25% match could be reimbursed through this program. That's, that's, that's good news.
We can use this money for, for the non federal required match on a lot of different programs, even though it's federal money.
So in preparation, because there's people in that program that are still waiting on, I've been waiting list myself. So would you, I guess you'd have to be already in, in that process in order to, to ask for that 25,000 or 25%?
Well, I mean, they, they can apply for our program, and, and we'll review the status of, of their application with Elevate.
Reapply for their, their share if they do get approved to another program. And this wouldn't come to fruition, I guess, until they got adopted.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would.
That's good information.
Accurate. If you need any media, any content for your media, for any messages you want to send out, I can connect you with our media folks. Happy to do that.
Okay. And your thoughts for you guys?
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Chuck, that's amazing information. I appreciate you coming out and bringing your, your good looking crew, as you say.
I asked him if he has anything to add to the discussion.
I was just going to say, as we were talking about it.
If you cover the microphone, I'm sorry.
Good evening. If you have a list of residents who are substantially damaged, I mean, we can go ahead and make calls out to them as well. So as you were starting to talk, I like the idea we do utility bill inserts all the time. That's a great way to get the word out. But if you would like us to make calls to folks, that is something that we can certainly do.
Yeah, communications are.
Gracious, thank you.
Communication, communicate, 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 but if nobody's listening on that channel, right? They, they don't get the information. Oh, I got one.
Should I all communicate through you or do you have anyone else that we can contact on your staff?
Go, go through me, and I'll connect you with, with who you need to be talking to, depending on what, what you need.
Okay.
Media contact, I'll connect you with, with those folks.
On this topic or something else? Okay, yeah, if you get, that's what it wants to leave.
7504 Chapel Avenue. Can there be reimbursement for anything besides brick and mortar? Let's say like air conditioners, generators, anything that was damaged in the floods at all?
We're a little bit limited there. Essential appliances, yes, refrigerator, stove, a dishwasher if one existed. We're considering washer dryer essential, an air conditioning unit would be essential, a built in air conditioner unit. So yeah, there are other things that we can do, not just the brick and mortar.
Is there, I guess there's a list on the, on the application that kind of shows what qualifies, those other things?
I don't know if there's a list on the application, but it's, it's really, it's essential equipment. And, and our, again, everybody will have a case manager that they can talk to and ask those questions. You know, what am I, what's part of this program?
So I think ask for everything and.
Yeah.
See if what applies.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Chuck, appreciate you coming out.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so going back to our regular town hall format, so just a couple of ground rules. Obviously, this is your meeting, agenda is open discussion, any, any topic is, is not off the table, just bring it up. Be kind and respectful to everyone, be attentive and not disruptive, try not to monopolize the meeting. There may be others who want to talk and have other questions. We did, we did do a brief now, a mobile town hall. We've, we did one over a couple, the last two town halls ago, over at the Mobile Home Park across the street. That was, what went well. So obviously, if you have a place that we could host an event, mobile town hall in your community, the community center that would allow people from the general public come in, we can look at doing that as well, so bring that to our attention. Have fun, be productive. One thing we all have in common is be the best we can be. And then obviously, after a topic is brought up, we're going to stay on that topic until that one's finished, and then we'll move on to another topic. And you can talk multiple times. So with that, I will open up the floor to anybody who wants to bring up a topic. Linda?
Linda Rodriguez, 5917 Land Court. Last city hall meeting, there was a gentleman who brought up the Cody River landing area and dilapidated conditions. As you all know, we have had a project in the works that got pushed aside because of the Gill Dog potential development, because nobody wants to wreck the new roads. I would, he is a business owner or landowner, and he brought it up, and I, I think we need to relook at that. We paid lots of money for those plans, and I'm of the feeling if you build it, they will come, where you're all saying, let's wait till they come and we'll build it afterwards. And I, and I think that's backwards. Who wants to put money into a new business that looks like the Cody River landing does now? It's no sidewalks, it's not safe, there's no lighting, the roads are potholed terrible. And that's all that prop, that, that's all that, that project was. It was new roads, sidewalks for safety, and lighting for safety, and that's all that gentleman was talking about. So I respectfully ask that you guys revitalize that program. That, that really needs to be done. And I, I mean, this is, how long are we going on with the Gill Dog property, almost two years now? And there's nothing been done. How long is it going to be before the project is completed? And then you want to do the stuff after that? That's three, four years down the road. Are you really willing to wait for the jewel of, of Port Ritchie to do something that makes it look nice? I think it's backwards. I, I think you really need to rejuvenate that plan. Change the plan if you like it, but I think we need to work on the sidewalks, the roads, and the lighting, so.
Yeah, and, and I would agree, obviously, we have some money we can invest down in that area. I think the original holdup, at least my perspective was, is that what's going to be happening there, which we kind of got an idea of now, what is kind of in the works? We haven't got the formal plans yet, but those should be coming soon. So I think as that comes in, then we can start looking at what areas do we want to go ahead and start deploying some of that in? Because you're right, there is, there's stuff we could do alongside of that, not wait till it's done. But just to be prudent, see, okay, what's going to be tore up and where?
Well, I mean, I, I'm not construction, y'all know that, so, but I'm thinking, if you fix the area between Pirate Bar and Gill Dogs, and the development company tears off that road, we build it into the contract or permit or whatever, that you break it, you fix it. You, we fixed it, now you broke it, now you have to put it back to the way it was beforehand. Now, don't wait three years till they're done. Construction can take forever, and we want to pull businesses down there. That's, I mean, it's, we want development down there. Who wants to, I wouldn't open a shop that, of a place that looks like that, where somebody can't walk around and there's no nice lighting. I wouldn't put a dime into that. So I, I think we need to, we, we need to revisit, I think.
I remember those plans, were there, the town halls, those plans?
Hell, yeah, the Ayers project is all, yeah, cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars for those plans.
I remember.
We had, you know, a nice little place for the Uber drivers to come, you know, like, so that, you know, because there's bars down there, want to make it safe. We even talked about the trolley possibly, having Newport Ritchie trolley connecting the two. I mean, there was, it was a lot of time and discussion and money from the city put into that project, and then it was just put on hold because there's going to be development, we don't want to wreck the roads. That's, and I said it then, and I continue to say it now, I think that's wrong. I think we need to make that area nice. We want to make other areas nice, but you've already got that area where there's established businesses, Hooters, Pirate Bar, Catches, Whiskey, I mean, the, the Marina, you've got established areas. These business owners deserve to have Port Ritchie throw some money into them. They, they deserve it. They've been very, they've been very patient with us, very patient with us. And I, and I think we need to show them some grace and, and help them out.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I think that.
And we will bring this up again at the council meeting, just to let you know, just to be fair to you. But because I really want people to get behind this, to, to support that.
Yeah, and I think the beauty of those plans, that we did pay so much money for.
Yeah, we did.
I don't know that we're going to deviate too much from that.
Whatever.
But there might be a few little tweaks just based on what's going to happen. And I think once we kind of figure that out, I think then we can really do that. And obviously, we put something in there if it does get.
Roads, lighting, rocket science.
It's not, it's not hard stuff. I think that the original, the original thought was, is that, is that going to be the road in the future? So, and I think based on what kind of what we're seeing, it is. Because they, they never acquired the, the other properties ones, so I don't think you're going to really have too much deviation. So that's something we can definitely look at.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on, I guess, the Cody River landing area? Development, roads, and sidewalks? If not, you guys, you guys have anything you want to add about that?
Well, I want to talk to everybody that are here tonight, but Andy and I have set up a date for a workshop, and we're inviting a lot of people, like I said, from the county, a, a lot of people who are going to explain nuts balls on developing that area, and how we can zone out and benefit from it. We're also going to have, I mean, Tampa Bay Whiskey Joe's of business owners and property owners, with their concerns. They want to be here and they want to listen to the possibilities, how the county can work with the city to develop that, and the funding that can be available for that, it can help everybody.
Did that date get set?
Yes, January 23rd at 3:00 PM. I want to make sure everybody can hit here, but they're not here. I want to get with Andy tomorrow, maybe can email, reach out to him and see if they're available.
January 23rd at 3?
Yeah, Friday.
Friday.
This is a workshop?
It would be a workshop.
Just procedure wise, I would, it was probably why he hadn't posted it. I think we'd either need myself to, to issue it or two council members. I have a problem doing it.
I thought they were going to be here tonight.
We couldn't act on it now anyway, it has to be at a council meeting.
And we can do it the next council meeting. I'm just letting people here know that this is the plan, and hopefully next council meeting, it'll be confirmed, and we can move forward.
Yeah, but I can do that without waiting for council meeting. So if, if you guys want to draw that up, I'd be happy to sign that to go ahead and formalize that meeting. It's a workshop, the workshop, right? Well, I don't know, procedurally.
It's not a special meeting, so.
So.
But what I would recommend.
Normally, council would have to.
What I recommend is that this be brought up at the next council meeting.
And then that way you've got consensus and. And that way everyone can be, you know, make sure that they can have a day available and done, just like we've done for any future meeting. But you don't have to do anything to, for like a, you know, this is not an emergency meeting.
Well, the only, obviously, we want to give as much notice.
They asked for it, actually.
Yeah, we want to give as much notice as possible. I should be able to call a workshop as well, I think. So rather than wait for the council meeting, let's go ahead and get it on the calendar. So if you want, if you want to get that ready.
What is the date again?
The 23rd at 3:00. Obviously, make sure your staff is okay with it.
I'm not, I'm not here.
You're not there?
Yeah, we didn't confirm with the city manager, this was all talked about today, so.
Oh.
Right.
So he, well.
He's, he's set the.
Whenever you guys work out a date, instead of having to wait for a meeting, call me, I'll sign it so we can get it done. I want to make sure that we have enough notice.
I'll confirm with him tomorrow to see if this is going to be locked in for the 23rd. And then, yes, so then we'll notify you to call the meeting.
Okay.
I had a problem with a lot of these people trying to get them all on the date. Andy and I, we moved the date around a little bit, he wanted to do it that week. Because we have stuff after, and then some people were going to make it, so that's kind of how it worked out.
Yeah, there's a lot of working parts in this one, so.
Yeah, it is. We got, actually, Celebrity's got six television programs that are going to be zooming in, and some other executives.
Well, plus, we also have to remember that, you know, Andy will only be a consultant at that stage, so. Don will be city manager.
He said he wants to be there, Don will be here too, I guess, but, you know.
We'll get back to council.
All right, thanks. Anything else on development? Okay, so I close that topic and open up floor for additional topic. Steve?
Steve Kocik, 7504 Chapel Avenue. Recently, I had a family tragedy, and I had to deal with the city on this, and was with the utility department. And I know at times, if somebody has a complaint, they come in here loud and clear, but how often do you have somebody come in to let you know that the staff was compassionate, caring, and got me through a situation that was very difficult professionally and quickly? And I just wanted to come up in front of the meeting, let you know that it is greatly appreciated by my entire family for the help that they gave us.
Awesome, that's good to hear. Thank you, Steve, appreciate that. Any comments on? Okay, next topic, if any. Could be a short meeting. I'll talk to you. Sure.
I came up earlier because they were here, and it was infrastructure and all, but the economic impact that the station can have promoting small businesses here is extremely critical. There's a, a big history of this. I mean, if you have something, I can, I can give a voice to small businesses that don't normally get to showcase what they do. So, and, and it doesn't really cost them much, if anything at all. And, you know, we coordinate with nonprofits, and we can, you know, do all the activities that are in the community, and try to make those a bigger success and, and attract a broader audience. So that's the benefits of this. So I do really think that it would be a good opportunity that we start to work towards that. I've spent a lot of money trying to make this happen, but at this point, it's now something that the city can use and utilize and help the city grow.
And you're on the air now, then you said, right?
We're streaming, we, we just got the final construction permit stuff. I had to move the tower, there's a tower over here, Recreative Paving, and Moore, Robert Moore owns that property. He donated the tower to me to use. It needs some substantial repairs. I'm getting that done. Temporary tower that's going in as of tomorrow, I can legally put that in. And we should have everything screwed together, hopefully by the weekend and on. We'll be test broadcasting. But I need content from the city, things that we can put on there. I mean, just like you want to get the word out for this, I mean, that's something we could do. And I mean, we can promote that, we'll be with a tent and out and activities, and trying to tie the city with this with a, we have a website, Ritchie FM. It has a directory on it too, for local businesses that can go in there, and they can advertise and show what they do. But we can do the announcements of, of anything, and promote, promote anything, like these programs that they talked about before, festivals, whatever you want to do. I mean, it's, it's a platform for that, designed specifically that by the government. That's what I'm obligated to do, is to try to help the community. But I do need some engagement, okay?
Absolutely.
All right.
And we got some, Christine capacity is out, is that something he gave, I guess? Yeah, so we've got some information up here to, to review too. Any other comments on Ritchie FM? And we'll take it fine, okay? I'll close that topic and open up floor for another topic. Council, I think you guys wanted to talk about? So I'll give the, like once? Twice?